Switch? There he is.
It's switched here on.
All right. I'd like to call the August 23rd, 2021 meeting of the Tracy City Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the obligation of our honor and the goodness of all for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's my honor tonight to preside over the council meeting in the absence of our mayor, Pam Corman, who's out of town tonight on a business meeting. I'd also like to acknowledge that the absence of council member Ron Koopman. Ron is recovering from a medical emergency eight days ago, and he's -- I talked with him in Sioux Falls today by telephone, and I'm pleased to report that he's doing well, feeling good, and feeling very thankful for the medical care that he's received. And he's especially thankful for the excellent care he received from Tracy responders on the night of his heart attack and fall. When I visited with him, he was looking forward to being transferred to a rehabilitation center in Sioux Falls. And I guess I join the rest of the council and the entire community in wishing Ron speedy recovery and hope he's back at his place sooner rather than later. So.
This guy's here.
We have a communication.
I do see Pastor Thor is here. So Pastor, would you like to lead us in an invocation?
Sure. Sorry, I was a minute late. Sure. Let's -- I missed the Pledge of Allegiance too, but I'll start us in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for a good city to live in and for the good people who live in it. Thank you for all of the ways that we are blessed and all the things that we have to be thankful for. We pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance to know how to take care of all of the resources that you've given us, help this city to be the best that we can make it. I pray that you would bring us together as people and that you would help us to seek out goodness and truth. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll add to what Seth said. I talked to Audrey, and Ron got moved to this rehabilitation place. So he's there, and they expect at least three hours a day of hard work for him until he gets a little stronger, then they'll raise it up. I forget the name of it, though.
Maybe Select? Select Hospital?
That doesn't ring a bell, but Audrey, just ask Audrey. She'll.
Thank you. I'd like approval, a motion to approve the agenda under any additions.
No, Mayor, we don't have any changes to the agenda tonight.
Motion approved.
All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? It's approved. Our first official matter on the agenda tonight is recognition of our Employee of the Year, Peggy's Walk. Peggy is -- has been given a number of complicated tasks under different difficult circumstances with minimal direction. For example, Peggy researched and stayed current with ever-changing COVID regulations. She created and maintained the COVID Preparedness Plan and completed all paperwork necessary for the monies received. She essentially invented the system we needed to keep our employees and the public safe. Peggy implemented a new Minnesota Drive system for processing licenses. Peggy researched and implemented a new accounting system. Peggy completed a complicated 2019 audit that had to take place remotely because of COVID. Peggy created the idea of serving customers at the window outside to be able to continue to help our people with their needs during the pandemic. Peggy dealt with these extensive changes while her office was under construction, and transactions increased significantly. Throughout this time, she continued to supply pleasant, optimistic, courteous customer service. Given the amount of change in her office, it is -- she put forth an incredible effort. Thank you, Peggy, for your dedication and work for the year. So come on down Peggy's Walk. Eric, would you like to add anything to those accolades?
I think those are fantastic accolades. You know, I started in 2020 in March, about two days before the pandemic, and for a lot of days Peggy and I were the only ones here, which is actually good because it gave me an opportunity to learn a lot about what was going on and really appreciated the effort and, you know, what she did to step up. And, you know, I was still trying to figure out my way around, you know, and so, you know, we needed somebody like her to be able to, you know, handle, you know, some things that needed to be handled, and she did that well. And, you know, we're real pleased and proud of her effort last year, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add that. You can always count on Peggy as a smiling face even under the most adverse of circumstances. So Diane, do you have the magic certificate or?
She got the plaque.
We've already given her the magic certificate, but I guess we --
That's the employee picture.
So I guess Peggy didn't bring her own plaque with her tonight, I guess, as did Mouse do. So but I think we should still take a picture anyway. So if we could do that, if you would come up.
The whole gang?
Sure.
Just hold it like this.
Yeah, that's right. That's Diane's.
Her neighbor.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, one, two, three, one more.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
No flash. No flash.
Do we have anyone from the public who would like to address the council tonight? You have up to three minutes. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period, and we will go on to our consent calendar. Have you -- you've all had a chance to read the minutes for August 9th, 2021, and August 12th, 2021. Does anyone have any amendments to suggest for the minutes of either of those two meetings? Can I have a motion to approve the August 9th, 2021, and August 12th, 2021 minutes?
I'll do one better than that. I'll make a motion to approve the August 9th and 12th minutes, approve municipal accounts payable and payroll without breakthrough beverage, and approve municipal accounts receivable.
Thank you. Dave, do we have a second? Thank you, Co. We've had a motion that's been seconded. Any other further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
We do.
Roll call, excuse me.
Nope, just helping.
The mistake.
Just helping.
Cool.
Aye.
Shontz?
Aye.
Landite?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
And Schmidt?
Aye. Okay, the motion is approved. Mayor and Council Communications.
We need one more.
One more, more, and I'll make that pay break too.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the municipal accounts payable and payroll without breakthrough beverage.
With.
With breakthrough beverage.
I'll second it.
Okay. Shall we have a roll call to approve that motion?
Shontz?
Aye.
Landite?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye. Thank you, council. Okay, Section 8, Mayor and Council Communications. Anyone have anything that they would like to share? I have a couple items. I'm very happy to report that the newly formed Parks Committee has met twice. The members are Connie Anderson, Mary Ann Ankrum, Melody Karen, and Rhonda Frederick. And we met two afternoons, and we had the reports that city staff prepared this spring and reviewed with the council on the condition of our parks and listed improvements that were planned at each park, and we toured each park. And that was quite kind of an eye-opening experience. I think all of -- everyone on the committee was just almost taken aback at the number and the size and the acres and the facilities that we have in our parks. A lot to take care of for our public works department. But the new committee has a lot of enthusiasm and ideas, and they're going to be a real asset to the city as we develop plans for what should be done with our parks. So I thank those committee members. And I'd also like to pass along my feelings that the -- some of the streets look -- are looking pretty sharp after the recent seal coating and crack sealing has been completed. And I've heard -- even heard a couple of public comments of people really pleased with how those streets are looking. So anyone else? Okay. We are coming up to the time for a public hearing on a variance request on a backyard utility shed. The request is from Jordan Hively and Brittany Knott. And Eric, would you like to just share a little bit about -- first, I'll open the public hearing and just ask if anyone from the public has anything to say about this variance request?
If you want me to set it up real quick first in terms of just what this is, or is it fairly straightforward? You know, the Planning Commission met and approved this unanimously. It's basically just a setback variance that says that they can put the shed a little bit closer to the fence than our code allows. It was recommended by staff and approved by the Planning Commission, and I think that the folks are here tonight.
Well, one of them are gone, or not here. They're going to be late.
Okay.
He has to work till seven, so.
Do you want to wait or just want to?
That's what I was going to ask, if you guys want to wait.
We have another one at seven, too, but we could.
If anybody has questions, we can postpone it, or if we're all good with it, we can just approve it and go. Don't.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward, but they didn't want to -- you guys feel that they didn't feel it was important that they come?
Absolutely, yeah. That's understandable. It's understandable. So we have some of the parties here, but not all the parties? Is that what it amounts to?
These two of our neighbors.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't recognize faces.
I mean, if they -- if they have something to say, then we can decide if we want to wait until.
Okay.
The homeowner comes.
Where is the shed located?
Inside the fence. They already have the wooden fence built, you know, on their property, but the -- it's supposed to be -- correct me on my numbers, 15 feet setback for a building?
It's six.
But it's six. It would be six, but it would be inside.
Yes, sir. Sir, would you please step up to the microphone for the purpose of the public hearing so we can get it recorded, just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is James Mayer. I live at 324 Fifth Street, and I thought maybe it had something to do -- I got a deal notice from a peer, and I don't know, you know. I thought maybe it had to do with the grade school property there in that area. See, my house is on that property there, and I was -- I thought maybe it had to do something with that. But the shed actually is on their property, right?
Yeah.
On their own property. Okay, that's -- I want to clear.
That answers your question, then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public during the hearing?
Good evening. I'm Wanda Aberson. My husband Ed is here. We live at 525 Roland. We came here tonight in support of our next-door neighbors, Jordan and Brittany, and their request for a variance. Our property line is the longest by linear foot of anyone next door to them, and we have no problem with their request. I think it should be noted that Jordan and Brittany are the true example of the families and the kind of family that Tracy needs, and we look forward to having them as neighbors for many years to come. We're thankful for them, and for -- we look forward to a positive outcome for them by your vote in favor of their variance. We hope this can be done in a spirit of cooperation and understanding between us as neighbors, and that's kind of what this world needs more of these days, it seems. So we thank you for your time and consideration on behalf of Brittany and Jordan, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wanda. Any other comments during the public hearing? Any other comments? Well, hearing no other comments, I am going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for consideration. Are we prepared to make a motion to act on this variance request?
I guess I'm on the Planning Commission, so I can kind of maybe go a little bit in detail since the homeowners couldn't be here yet. It's inside the fence, and so it would not affect any other property owners. The fence is already there. You would be able to see, yes, the roof part of it, but otherwise it's going to be behind the wooden fence already. We did not see that there would be any issue with it because they do not have alley access, so it's not like they can put one by the alley. They don't have that option, so that's why the planning and zoning approved it unanimously. I mean, does anyone else have any other questions I would try to answer?
I don't -- I'm not against it, so don't misunderstand me, the public, but how did the fence get so close to the -- doesn't that have to follow variance rules?
There was probably another variance sometime back when they built.
It's a difference variance for structure than it would be for the fence.
Okay, and that was my only question.
A different setback, rather, not variance.
Okay, I think the fence only has to be so far from.
I don't remember what the number is. Do you want to, Shane, you want to tell them what the actual numbers are?
Well, I don't mean to open up a can of worms.
No, we should get it on the public record. I think it's a good question.
So fences can actually be, in some cases, up to the property line. There's some different things you have to do, like on an intersection for line of sight. You can see some corner lots will have a fence at an angle. That's because of the line of sight with traffic. But fences, they can -- if you have a neighbors agreement, you can actually put them right on the line. Just depends on how well you get along with your neighbor and if you have some kind of written agreement on shared maintenance or whatever. I would say there's nothing against in the ordinance as far as putting a fence right on the line, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fine. I guess, like I say, I'm not against it. I'm just curious.
Now you know.
Now I know.
Good question.
Well, then I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2021-81 for Jordan Hively and Brittany Knott.
I'll second it.
All in favor of the motion? Roll call, please.
Tal?
Aye.
Shontz?
Aye.
Landite?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Not sure what to call you. Schmidt.
Here we.
Mr. Smith. Mayor Schmidt.
Motion approved. All right, we've got about 10 minutes left until our next public hearing at 7:00. So I'm going to move down to the staff reports, department head reports. Chief Lipte, could you lead us off, please?
If you have any questions about the activity report that I attached, I'll take those. I'd just like to thank everybody for doing a good job with National Night Out again this year and making that event happen. There's a lot of working pieces involved in that, so Officer Hanson does a very good job of coordinating that and making sure that all the pieces fall into the right places. So the committee is there to back him up, and they all do such a great job with it. So it was another great event this year. Other than that, I just let you know that I looked into a few -- or I tried to get some prices for 2022 squads. Ford currently is the only one that has prices out for 2022. Lockwoods and Marshall said as soon as GM has a price for their vehicles, they will give me a call. Both are telling me that if I order by September, I might have it by June next year, so we'll see how that goes. Kind of waiting to have something to compare them to, so.
Jason, that lack of availability, that's due to the supply chain disruptions caused by the pandemic? Is that what's going on there or?
Yeah, some, and, you know, with them not getting regular vehicles out, I'm sure squad cars aren't their priority either because it's a separate line, so.
Is there a state bid we can go for on something like that?
Yeah, and there'll all be state bid prices.
Oh, they're all state bid prices.
It's a state bid pricing. We've bought the last -- if you remember the Dodge pickup that was bought through Lockwoods off state bid, and then the Taurus and the last two Explorers have all been through Redwood off their state bids, or off the state bid, just through them, they handled it.
So Marshall Ford don't have state bid?
They have. They just didn't come in within price of Redwood, so.
Okay.
I mean, because they all have their setup fees and everything else, so. Other than that, catch up on some nuisance ordinance stuff. Originally, I wrote five citations. Only one of those is paid, and those were administrative citations. Four of the four that didn't pay the administrative citation have now been issued criminal citations, and I'll have to go in front of a judge for those when their court dates come up. I'm working on a couple other issues to try to get corrected in the next couple weeks before Boxcar Days happens and really hoping that we have some paved streets to make Boxcar Days go smoother, so.
Jason, as the upswing with the Delta variant, has that complicated your job at all? Not really? Good.
Knock on wood.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks. Val, would you like to be next?
We are wrapping up our summer reading program, so if anybody out there hasn't turned in their reading logs yet to me, please do it by the end of this week. I'd like to get those drawn for the prizes. Hoping to take some pictures this year and send them into the paper so everybody can see who the winners were. We had a really good turnout for our program on Saturday. We had 25 people come to see Pam Noack. I think that's about all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
What's the prize that you're giving off?
Okay, so for the preschool age, we have -- it's like a wooden toy that's kind of like a marble run. And then for the school-age kids up to, you know, like sixth grade, Lego set and a book, a Lego building book. And then we got a grant through Prairie Lands to buy two Kindle fires for the teens, and I use that to bribe a lot of teens to sign up for the reading program this summer. But, you know, that's no shame. No shame in that.
Very nice. So just generally, how much does a child or a student have to read to be eligible for the drawing?
So you get your name in the drawing for every 200 pages you read. So the more you read, the better your chances are of winning. And we started that last year, you know, rather than giving silly little prizes, we decided to try something a little bit bigger, to try to entice people. And also, we seemed to have a problem with -- everybody's really enthusiastic at the start of the summer, and then they never turn in their reading logs. Well, this encourages more people to turn in their reading logs because if you don't turn it in, you don't get your name in the drawing. So it's been very successful for us.
Any other council questions? Thanks, Val.
All right, thank you.
First, your report looks kind of complicated, so I'm not going to call on you with three minutes to go.
How fast can you talk, Jeff?
I don't think you can talk for three minutes.
What's that?
What was that?
Yeah.
I didn't think you could talk for three minutes.
Ah, I think I can. Not a problem. Okay, I've got a few things. Just what you have in your report there, dealing with a lot of multiple land dealings right now, we're going to be going over those, one of those here in just a little bit. Finalizing some new business loan dealings that the EDA has approved over the past few weeks. With the swimming pool, there was a couple things that I told you I would get back to you this month with. I'm going to give you some final numbers on the pool in September, but I have a few numbers right now. Somebody, I don't remember who it was, asked me about prices for the swimming lessons, so I reached out to Pipestone, Marshall, Slaton, Westbrook. So I've got some -- they're kind of all over the board. There's nobody that does as inexpensive as Tracy does. There is a couple of them in the public pool in Marshall. Actually, it's pretty close, but they only do eight days a lot of times. Some of them only do one week for the amount of money that we're charging. So and actually, the YMCA for a non-member is $90. That was the closest when it came down to time because that is a two-week period, but it was $90, which is well over double of what we charge. So it's something that we can address this coming year when we start looking at the pool again. Also, another thing that we need to address this coming year will be the pool parties. Right now, we're not -- I can tell you, we are not breaking even on the pools with that after you got to pay your lifeguards and you're bringing in 80, 90, as many as 100 people into that and charging $200 or $300. You know, it's a great deal, and we want to keep those people coming. We were up 10 this year over previous, over 19 in the number of pool parties that we scheduled. And so I think we can continue to get that many pool parties and make it a little bit more lucrative as opposed to just basically giving it away. So I told you I would report back on that. Couple of other things that there were over 200 students this year in swimming lessons, which is the most that they had, according to Shannon Benson, that was the most they'd ever seen. So any questions with the pool at all? Pretty simple. I'll have some final numbers in a month on those, too. The multipurpose center is -- I did a count from all names that were signed up in June and July. Somebody had asked me for that also. There was actually 54 names, different names, that had visited the multipurpose center or at the Eagles for the senior cards and coffee and that type of thing. And there was a lot of -- there was some of those that were, you know, one time, and then there was some people that, you know, that go. And then there was some people that, you know, that go every, you know, on the Saturday events. But there's 54 people that that use that on different times. We're going to address something else here in just a little bit, too, with with the timing of the the multipurpose center opening at the Eagles Club. Working with the EDA grants, just want to let everybody know. I've been communicating through the newspaper and through email and phone calls. And we will be fair to everybody here in town that wants to fill out an application for the EDA grant for some help for social media, for online marketing. But that that application is due September the 3rd. So we've only got, well, as of tomorrow, it'll probably be a week and three days to get those applications in. Again, that EDA grant that was given to the city is, a part of it was to give businesses here in town that were affected by COVID some some help with their online marketing. And so I don't believe that we're going to have any problem getting 20 people to sign up for that through applications. And it's Eric and I, I believe it's just you and I, Eric, are, we're doing the, we're going to go through the applications when we get them. Okay, so there'll be more to come with that.
Jeff, I'm going to interrupt you so we can get that public hearing going. But I'll call you back.
Well, I'm here for this, too. This is mine, too, so.
All right, very good. Well, we have, I'm going to call to order a public hearing to consider a division of a vacant lot between two properties on Elm Street. And I'll call the hearing to order. Does anyone, before I ask Jeff to give an explanation of what's being done, does anyone from the public wish to address this issue? Jeff, could you just give a little synopsis of what this is about?
Yep, I can. The EDA owns a lot at 213 Elm Street. It's a vacant lot that the EDA has owned for two or three years now. And we've been, as a city, we've been taking care of the, with the lawn care and everything else. So the EDA wanted to get rid of some of their smaller properties that weren't going to be able to be built on. So we started marketing them a little bit more. So I started talking to neighbors and that type of thing. What we have going on with this particular one is there is a house on each side of this property, and them two are actually the, are going to buy the property. One of them is going to buy 40% of it, and the other one's going to buy 60% of it. So a little bit of the, so there's the quick synopsis of what it is. So we're selling the property, and if anybody needs names or anything, it's the address of 201 Elm Street and 235 Elm Street are the, on both sides of 213. So that's who we're we're selling it to, is the neighbors on both sides. Pretty simple. We're selling it for $1,000. We paid $587 for it two and a half years ago. Of course, we've kept it kept it mode and everything.
And then they're paying for all the paperwork and the...
Yeah, they they're paid for all the paperwork. They paid for Matt's fees. I had Matt draw it up. They actually paid for the the surveyor to come out, which was 600 and, was it $650 or $850? But they paid for all that. They split it up, and then they're going to split the the price of the of the land. So it's just going to give them each a nicer yard. Good thing about this, they've been keeping, taking care of it. I can, after you close that, I'll talk about that a little bit.
Is there any, if I, there's no one else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? I will close the public hearing for council discussion and action. Council, do we have some discussion or questions?
I just want to know what else Jeff was going to say.
Okay, I can bring that up right now. If you get a chance, you know, where Wanda, I was hoping Wanda was going to stay a little bit longer, but what Wanda was saying about these people and how well they've done with that property, where they're putting that that shed in their backyard or whatever. If you get a chance, go by 201 and 235 Elm Street. It's the it's the pool road. George, I'm sure you go by it a lot of times.
Yeah.
If you could have taken a picture of those two properties, the one, 235, was vacant for years, at least two or three years. And it is starting to show its its age when you don't live in something. And the one on the corner at 201, five years ago, I would have said that that, as of today, that would have been on our list of what are we going to do with it? Because if somebody isn't going to do something with it, we're going to have to end up buying it and tearing it down. Go by it. It is, that's what, like Wanda said, it's the the right people moved to town on both sides with the the Strohmiers and the the Dobsons live on both sides. Now that whole corner is completely cleaned up. They both, and the EDA property that went all the way back to the fence that butts up against the the swimming pool park down there, they had cleaned all of that before they even owned it. They just started cleaning it.
Looks very, very nice.
Oh, my gosh. And now they're painting, the 201 is painting, and they put a new roof on it. It's just, it's just a night and day difference. And that's what we're looking at throughout the whole city, not just with the CDBG, the the grants, the small cities grants that we're giving out, but just having good people move to town that want to take care of their property. If you get a chance, drive by there. I wish I would have taken pictures of that house on the corner. But I was probably too embarrassed to take a picture of the house on the corner five years ago.
You've done a very nice job.
Oh, my gosh.
I think this is an example of where it really paid for the EDA to take an active action to get, gain control of the property so that they could look for new buyers and then sell it. Because I know it had been on tax forfeiture and on by line quality for a number of years.
Yep. It does. It looks fantastic and it'll even look better. I don't know that they're ever going to build on it. But now they've got more of a yard. The 201 doesn't have much of a yard at all, but now they're going to have another 40 feet of a yard that their grandkids will be able to play in. And and it's just, if they end up wanting to build a garage onto it, I don't know that that'll ever happen. But at least they'll own the land and they'll have it taken care of. We need more people like the the Dobsons and the Strohmiers to move to town.
And Mayor Protam, council, purchase agreement has been drafted along with the warranty deed that's ready for the EDA to sign. The purchase agreement does provide that they are required to pay for any fees associated with the draft, drafting those documents. So those will reimburse, that's part of the sale. So those are ready to go. The resolution authorizes the EDA to proceed and execute those agreements pending your passing of the resolution tonight.
I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 2021-80.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Tom?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Shont?
Aye.
Cheeks?
Aye.
Mayor Schmidt?
Yes. The motion is approved. Thank you.
I think that's all I've got, too.
Anything else?
Nope, I got, that's it. I've seen Eric giving me the evil eye, so that's it. It's not evil. It's a bemused.
He's just giving you the eye.
Krista, could you, or would you like to be next?
Sure. Let's see. So I would like to start off just congratulating Peggy again on Employee of the Year. I know I wasn't here in 2020, but since I've started, she's been a great resource for me and really getting me up and running in my position. I still have tons of questions for her all the time, and she's always willing to take the time to explain things to me. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. As far as my monthly report goes, I also wanted to call out Krista. She did a phenomenal job contacting customers before August 5th for shut offs. She was able to get the list narrowed down to nine customers on August 5th that were shut off. And really, it happened between the 5th and the 6th because of Al's scheduling. So in the end, we ended up, I think, with just four customers. And right now, we're down to one or two. So she was able to get 14 customers set up with payment arrangements. Seven customers proved that they had a Ucap application, and about 65 customers paid off their delinquent balances. She spent a lot of time just calling customers and communicating with them. And a lot of them were more than willing to pay off their delinquent balance or work with us to get their accounts caught up. She did an awesome job there. I did have a typo in the Swift Lake Park revenues for July. It should be $858. I was already ahead of myself into August. Well, let's see, Liquor Store, since Tam isn't here tonight, had a phenomenal month for sales in July with, what did they end at, about almost $95,000 in sales for July. So they are right on track where we want them to be at this point in the year. Things are going good. It seems to be a great location. Tam's managing that really well. As far as licensing goes with driver's license, motor vehicle, and DNR, we have seen a little bit of a slowdown in business. It's kind of the time of the year from the way the trend looks. We are still above where we were year to date over last year. So we're still seeing customers coming, just not as many as we were at the beginning of the year, which is a huge concern. And then the only other note I had, we did implement a new meter reading software at the end of last month. Was perfect timing. It was right at, right at the end of the month when Al was doing his meter readings. So we have a new handheld tremble device that he uses to drive around and take readings. And then it populates into a web-based system now. It's a lot less manual work for Al and Krista and should be able to provide us some better, better data and analysis of accounts that could potentially have leaks or issues so that we could take care of those a little bit sooner. First month, had a couple of quirks and a few bugs to work out, but I think it seems to be a pretty easy software to use.
So Krista, in other words, if this new software will make it easier for you to spot if someone has their unusual volume of water at a meter, that you can contact them immediately?
Correct, yep. Krista does that on a monthly basis already, so she gets a report printed off. And she reviews that report and will call customers if she sees high usage. This new system will actually be easier to identify those customers.
Good, because that used to really be a problem when we were a month behind and customers sometimes could get that enormous bill if they had a leak.
Yep, yeah, it's good. I like it so far. And I think it will, it'll even save Al time just because of the the new software and the new handheld. He can actually, we tested it just outside the doors here, and we picked up 15 readings. So he doesn't necessarily have to drive by every house. It kind of gets smarter the more he uses it. And he'll just have to hit like high points throughout town where he gets multiple readings. It'll save him quite a bit of time that way. Any other questions for me?
So I take it we haven't had any suggestions to go back to the old system of guys going down into the basement to read water meters and mailing in the car and so forth?
No.
Sounds pretty slick.
Every household has this capability, got the proper meter, reader, whatever.
There might be one or two that Al has to manually read, but that should be fixed within the next couple of months.
Any other questions? Thank you, Krista. Shane?
Talk as much of the last two, but. As you can see, last month, there's been a lot going on in town. Seal coating, crack sealing, probably the high point. Like to thank everybody that did move their cars off the road so we could get that done. I think we just had one that we had to tow that we couldn't get a hold of. I think some of them, they got the crews, either got them moved or the keys are in them and they put them in neutral or whatever, but they somehow got them moved, but.
Is everything all done now with the whole project?
So as far as 2021 street maintenance project per se, everything is complete. And actually, I think after this week, the bills will all be paid for that, so. And that's in budget, so. So as far as what's left, I haven't looked exactly, I have to get with Krista on the project code.
Have you filled the hole out to Bryan Court? Did they fill that?
Not yet. I'm going to try to get them to come back and do a few other things yet in town on the roads that didn't get seal coated. But I haven't heard exactly when they're coming back yet. But yeah, I want to get that done here soon. If not, if we can't get it done before Labor Day, I think we'll just do it with our crew. Right now, the other thing we're working on right now is, the guys are busy all last week and probably most of this week, getting that bridge finished up at Swift Lake. I don't know if anyone stopped out there. Bridge is in, they're doing the two approaches now for that. And then we'll look at some of the cracks that were in the bike path that we can do with the budget that we have, at least this year. And we'll have to look at that as a future maintenance item, but. I don't know if you had any questions on the report?
Shane, how many blocks did we end up with with crack sealing and and seal coating roughly, would you say?
I knew this at one point. I want to say it was 20 or 25 of the crack sealing, and then the seal coating was, I'd say three quarters of the town is probably pretty accurate. But I'd say all of half a town for sure. I don't know how many blocks that is, but I can get back to you on that one.
Well, it's, it looks pretty extensive.
So it's easy if I look at my spreadsheet, but.
Okay.
It looks good.
Shane, on that bridge over that, on the bike trail, which is a good idea, will there have to be, will that be wet? Will that would be wet? For, or could it be a hazard for bicyclists going over that wet bridge?
There is sand on the on the coating on the platform, so it's an anti-slip surface.
Oh, good.
So as it, the sand might wear out over years with snow removal, but we can reapply that. Yeah, it's, it's pretty gritty, so.
Good.
If not, we'll look at, there's other coatings you can put on it to help that out, but.
Any other questions? Thanks, Shane.
Job well done.
Thank you.
We know he's really busy. Eric?
Before I get into my report, I've got a couple of things I want to bring up to the city council. The first one is, there's an email in front of you. It's from Red Cross. They do blood drive, you know, here at the VMC. In the past, they have asked for the fee to the VMC have been waived, and it has been waived. However, the city council has kind of changed its its view on this earlier this year in terms of not waiving fees. But they asked, and so I wanted to bring it to you. And so is there any appetite? It does say in this email that they would pay any fee, but if if not, and they understand that, but they're still, they're asking for it to be waived. So is there any appetite to waiving this fee?
What is the fee?
It's, how much, what is the fee? What is the fee at the Red Cross research?
Each time.
Each time. And they're going to have, I think, three different times, that they're three different days.
I don't know how we waive it when, I'll be honest. I think we said it saying we weren't going to be waiving anymore so that every requestant keep coming to the council so that we sit here and go through this?
I won't bring any more to you then, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. We have no problem saying no. We haven't done that. And in the past, we, there's actually been a few we haven't brought to you specifically. But because this is one we have waived in the past and because they specifically asked us to ask the city council, we we felt compelled to do that. But but we're happy to be, you know, your enforcers so that we don't have to keep doing this. But you don't have to do anything unless you want to waive it. You don't have to, you don't have to do anything, and I can move on to the next item. Seems like we're going to move on to the next item.
Are there dates?
Are there dates for those two blood drives?
Yeah, what are those dates? There's two that they know and one there's...
So there's one October 7th and one on February 21st. There's one also in December, but that didn't work for the school's schedule with the sports. So the school had given them four other dates to look at and we haven't heard back from them on that yet.
We'll say the Red Cross is a big organization and with a lot of money, I don't think they'd have any issue paying fees.
I just don't want to be going down that road because as soon as we start again...
No, no problem. We're not gonna, we're not even gonna...
Trust me, I'm for blood donation.
We're not gonna bring these, we're not even gonna bring these forward anymore.
Let's just, with that request, let's just all personally make an effort to donate blood on that day and encourage other people in the community.
Yes, it is a good thing. I donated earlier this year when they were here and I think everybody should do that if they can, absolutely. The next item is another one of our favorite controversial items, but...
Don't bring it.
Have to. We'll bring back a change. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. We should have brought back a change to a resolution, but based on the conversation, but we neglected to do that. We'll bring that the next time. But we intend to change the hours at the Eagles Club for seniors from 11:30 to 4:30 to 12:15 to 4:30. We're not really seeing anybody come at those early times because LSS won't serve, you know, a meal, and so we feel that it doesn't make any sense to staff it because we have to have somebody there, you know, at all times whether they're ready or not. And so, this is Jeff's recommendation. We'll bring back a resolution to officially change it, but I want to let you know that that's happening and ask if there are any objections to that because that was the controversial issue at the time.
That gives them adequate time for their bridge and...
Yes. Yes, they need four hours for that.
There's nobody there until 12:30, so 12:15 would be fine.
Yeah, 12:15 is fine.
I'm just, I just need it to be flexible, so in case the LSS does cut in eventually...
Well, you really, if people are gonna talk, they need to come to the podium. Gotta set an example for the rest of the public.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I would like the, whatever resolution comes up, the other one was setting standards, so it was, it was 11:30 to 4:30. I would like to be able to, you know, at a drop of a hat, be able to say, hey, we need somebody there because we're gonna serve a meal there today or next week, Tuesday, or, you know, three months from now. So if there's a little bit of flexibility in the resolution, that's what I'd like to see.
That's what we'll bring back the next time, is something with flexibility.
And that will not affect their Saturday...
No.
What are you calling it?
No, well...
Potluck, yeah.
Doesn't affect the potluck, it's just Monday through Friday.
It's just, yeah, the Monday through Friday instead of, because we have somebody that's there a good 45 minutes before that and I've talked to the employees and it's, it won't be a problem.
So you don't have to do anything tonight unless you want to register any objections. We're gonna start doing that.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
The next, thanks Jeff. The next, just, I did put a report on your chair in front of you. I apologize. Normally, I like to have these to you in your packet, but since I was on vacation last week moving kids around at school, I wasn't able to get it done until today. But just to kind of run through kind of a few, you know, quick things. The comprehensive plan survey completed on the 13th of August and we had 229 total responses. That's a pretty big number, you know, for a community like Tracy. At some point, we'll bring back the results to you as well as the Citizen Committee. And then they're gonna, you know, based on that survey, we asked people, would you be interested in, in focus groups? And so we have a bunch of names from the community and Rosemary Bruce White, who's doing this through SRDC, is putting together the focus groups on some various topics in September. And so, we'll continue to collect information and then as soon as we have kind of the community feedback portion of it, she's gonna start writing some of that comprehensive plan. We expect that this will be done kind of in the first quarter of next year. We're working through the process on that. There was some interest, there is some interesting information in there for sure, particularly as it relates to facilities and, and so we look forward to bringing that to you. The, moving on to the EDA grant, which Jeff already talked about a little bit, we're, there's two parts of that that we're working on right now for the technical assistance portion of it. One is that we're recruiting and have advertised for businesses to participate. And so, there's an application and that application is due by September 3rd. And so if you're interested in your business that is interested in getting some help from a qualified professional to help you with your web marketing efforts, you can, you can pick up an application from Jeff and get it in by the 3rd and then we'll evaluate those. The other half of that is hiring folks to do the work. We've got three interviews scheduled tomorrow and there's some talented people around here. I don't think people, we even realized that we had some folks like that that are, that are local and I'm sure that we'll be able to find some people to help us be the qualified consultants for these. We're not sure if we're gonna hire one person or two or three, but, but we'll, we'll have that figured out relatively soon. And so that project should get started in September. And so we're excited about that.
Their wages, everything are covered by the grant?
Eighty percent of it is covered by the grant. We're paying for 20% of it, yes. Yes, it was an 80/20 match. So we get $111,000 and then that's what we're gonna receive from the EDA and then the 20% of that is, on top of that is gonna be our match, which we budgeted for in 2021, sorry, what year is it? We budgeted for this year as part of our marketing and advertising line item, so that money's already been accounted for. And we'll have to budget money then next year. Essentially, we won't spend a lot of the money in that marketing line item this year and then that'll carry forward into next year. Any questions about that?
So it's mostly training for our business?
Yeah, it's basically, it's a two-year project. They're gonna, they're, they're not going to build a website for them, but they can help with them, how, how do you market your products online? You know, what do you do with social media? You know, so they can kind of help them. It's more like a teaching to fish kind of situation as opposed to fishing, because ultimately, and that's why we want people to stay with it for two years, because we want our businesses to be able to do this and learn these things, but it's not a permanent thing. You know, you're not gonna have somebody there forever. But, but the idea is that they can help them. Five hours a month, so that's 60 hours, 120 hours, you know, over a two-year period for business. That's quite a lot of, that's quite a lot of training and support. So our hope is, is that we can, we can help people get a little more web savvy. Our thought is that, that will help them sell their products, not just here locally, but think about, you know, the world as a whole as your, as your marketplace and, you know, there's a couple of businesses that have been successful, that's Second Wind, for example, did that, most of their business online. And we think there's some other people that can do the same kinds of things here.
Now, is this open to home businesses as well?
Open to any business, yes. Any business, doesn't matter if it's a home business or brick and mortar business, they have to, the business address has to be in the city of Tracy, city limits though. So if you're outside the city limits, you don't have to live here in Tracy, but your business has to be based here in Tracy. So that's happening. The, I think the rest, I, we already covered, the other thing I was gonna cover is kind of the summer park maintenance and parking. I think Mayor, you already did that earlier tonight and so, you know, with that, that's kind of the highlights of my report and everything else is, is on this document as well. Any questions about that or anything you want to know about? Then that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Eric. So that covers our department reports. So we will move on to new business and resolution. Our first resolution tonight is approval of a AWR policy or a policy on workplace safety and Eric, you wanna...
Yeah, the next three, I'm gonna, are kind of a group. Peggy's gonna talk about them. These are things that came out of our risk management analysis that the League of Minnesota Cities does every year and, you know, this is the kind of stuff that when we hired Krista as the Finance Director, that frees Peggy up to do. It's gonna make our organization more efficient and safer and I'm gonna let her talk about, I don't know, if you want to talk about each one in turn or...
Yeah.
So I'll turn it over to Peggy.
Alright. First off, thank you all for the nice, kind words tonight. I appreciate that. We'll start off, like Eric said, this is in response to the League's review. I apologize for taking up, I think it was about 160 pages of your council tickets.
And it was a great read.
So, sorry about that, but we'll make quick work of it because I'll just highlight what each one does. So the first one was the AWARE, a Workplace Accident and Injury Reduction Program. The League has been suggesting this for quite some time, looking back. At least five years, Shane?
All of that.
All of that. So we got one implemented and that's what we have in front of you tonight for review. They suggest that we adopt one along with the workplace accident and injury. There's also checklists for every facility and also for every, to make sure that each, each business room of us, so the library, the liquor store, the street department, the police department, has the proper posters, have the right written policies, that we review hazardous materials, surfaces, equipment, PPE vehicles, and then also the investigation of accidents. So this outlines all of the checklist that go along with that. And what the expectation is, is that the employees become more aware of their surroundings and also implements a form for them to call out if they see something that should be addressed. Questions on that program?
Peggy, I'm of course all in favor of employee safety and it's a very good-looking report, but didn't the city of Tracy do this, implement a rather detailed policy some years ago?
Not that we found within our books.
Because I distinctly remember something, but...
It was in, it was a recommendation, like I said, for many, every single year, but it was never implemented.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think it certainly, anything that promotes workplace, a culture of, you know, people being safe and not taking shortcuts and so forth, I'm all for. Any other comments on the...
I don't remember it like sense of reading.
Yes.
Do we do like a benchmark of like each facility? Like, you know, as of September 1st, here's the, what we know?
Yes, so we were in discussion as to what that's gonna look like. Once it's adopted, we want to do a first walkthrough and then set up a follow-up. So it might be a night, you know, depending on the situation that's discovered when we do our first walkthroughs. The follow-up may be annually for some things, it may be 90 days for others. It just, it just depends on what's discovered after that first walkthrough.
But each department head is ultimately responsible for their department?
The responsibility has not been assigned as of right now.
Oh. Let me, let me comment on that for a second. You know, one of the things that I have been working to do over the last year and, and something that actually Peggy's a key player in, we've had a lot of silos where each department might be responsible for their own things and people then don't know what other people are doing and it creates a lot of issues. And I'll just give you one small issue. We have a lot of fire extinguishers throughout all of our buildings and a lot of those expired. And you don't want a fire extinguisher to expire because when you need it, you gotta be able to use it. Well, I don't know how many dozens there were, but it was a lot and a lot of them were expired. Well, we really need to have a program where we know that we can go in and somebody be responsible for making sure that those kinds of things are checked, rather than relying on a department head to say, oh, well, did I check those in my building this year? No, I want Shane to focus on public works projects, not whether or not his, his fire extinguishers are up to code and up to date in his building. And so, the intent, as we roll out some of these larger policies, is that Peggy essentially is responsible for ensuring that these kinds of things happen. And it's a little bit of a change for department heads, but if we could break down those silos a little bit and think about, you know, how do we have consistent standards across all departments? How do we make sure that we adopt safety protocols the same way? Computer policies the same way? Everything the same way? So we have that consistency, we know we're doing it, you know, according to policies that are adopted by you, the City Council, according to standards that the League of Minnesota Cities or other best practices want us to adopt. That's what we want to do. It's a bit of a change, you know, for folks, if you're used to kind of doing things your own way, but ultimately, that's why we bring it to you, because we want the City Council to say, yes, this is something we want to do. And ultimately, it will be Peggy's responsibility to make sure that these things are implemented in collaboration and working with department heads, making sure that they happen.
In Eric's example, then, once the fire certification was discovered and the new fire extinguishers were installed, Shane made a list of where all of them were located for us and now Lydell is the one checking them to make sure. So it just depends on the, on the checklist as to who's, where the responsibility is gonna lie.
Yep.
But Lydell's in each facility, so it made sense for him to be the one checking those fire extinguishers.
Yep.
Okay. Do you want me to discuss each one and then you guys can go in to vote or do you want to vote?
As she talks about, do we want to approve the resolution for that one?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-75 to approve the AWARE policy.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Resolution...
You gotta go to vote.
Roll call on Resolution 2021-75.
Landay?
Aye.
Teagues?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shuns?
Aye.
And resolution passes. Okay.
Alright.
Onto Resolution 2021-76, approval of a fleet management program.
This too was a recommendation from the League of Minnesota Cities. It mainly outlines the safe, safe operation of the motor vehicles along with an accident protocol, maintenance protocol, driver training requirements, accident investigation, and then also distracted driving. So it will be presented to employees, they'll have to sign off their understanding that they've received policy, that they understand distracted driving, and then those employees that drive city-owned vehicles will also take a driving course. And Officer Lickte, Chief Lickte was kind enough to put that together, so September 15th, that's already in place for all of our drivers to have their driver training course.
Like the rent course or...
Behind, behind the wheel.
What if they fall?
We didn't, we didn't set up a second date.
Peggy, would these...
It also names a fleet coordinator. The fleet coordinator would fall to Sean Torgelson as the mechanic. And then it also writes up the accident review policy, having a actual accident review committee, which would be myself, Krista, and then whichever department head of the employee who is involved in an accident.
Peggy, I was gonna ask, would some of these provisions like distracted driving, for example, that apply to an employee who is driving their own vehicle?
On city business, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Do we get any insurance discount or something like that?
We do not.
No, gotta ask.
I know.
I'm looking for a, a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Shuns?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teagues?
Aye.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
See how fast we're getting through 164 pages?
Okay Peggy, the next resolution, please.
Is the computer security an acceptable use? Is the Computer Security and Acceptable Use Policy. This was also a recommendation by the League, and then we also implemented our social media that we had in place into this, so it's one policy, so it's computer and security use. It is lining, outlining unacceptable use, a clean desk policy, an email policy, ethical use of our systems, and then password standards, some guidelines on that being eight characters or more, and then suggesting phrases, you know, phrase segments instead of birth dates, names, places like that. Remote access policy, and then wireless and software install, internet usage, and then, like I said, we implemented the social media. And that pretty much states that wins, you know, only those that are authorized to post to the city sites, whether it be the library site, or the City of Tracy site, or the police department site, those are the only people who are to post, and then also limits the comments as a city employee.
Do you, do you have backup, say, Chief Lickety's out of town, the next person in charge?
Yep, Officer Hanson can post, yep.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, or whatever the case, if Shane's out of town...
Yep, and same here, Eric, Diane, and I believe Shane, right, can post to the city website.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Peggy, that clean desk policy, that applies to people who work in public spaces?
Yes.
Or does that apply to everyone?
Well, it applies to everyone. Let's, I'll just use my desk as example. I have social security numbers, I have, you know, personal data that needs to not be viewed by other employees and not by the public. So clean desk policy being that things are locked up that are private data, and it also outlines what's public data and what's private data.
Do you have that definition?
Pardon?
Do you have that definition?
Clean desk isn't so much the clutter, right, Mr. Hanson?
That's right, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-77, the Computer Security and Acceptable Use Policy.
We have a second. A second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Could we have roll call?
Shuns?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
All right, that is all that I have to represent tonight. There are two more recommendations that will be brought forth as we get them done. That would be the roof inspection and then also the sidewalk inspection. Those both were recommended by the League, but they haven't been completed yet.
Roof inspection that's on city buildings or all buildings?
All city facilities, which will not be me going up to inspect those. I'll just record it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Peggy.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, our next resolution deals with the Automatic Weather Operating System at the airport.
Wow, you know what the acronym stands for, I'm impressed.
Yeah, do you want to handle that one, Eric, or is Shane doing it?
You know, I, I think a combination of Shane and Krista on this one, I think Krista can talk about the numbers, and maybe Shane, why don't you explain what this is first, and then Krista can talk about the numbers.
All right, so the AWAS system, whoever's been out to the airport, if you notice, on the, right now it's on the north side of the driveway, kind of behind the main hangar. There's a, let's say like a 30-foot, 40-foot tower there with some other little contraptions on some cement pads out there. That's actually obsolete, it's been there for quite a few years. State's looking at getting all, all airports in the state converted over to the new system. The proposed site that's been approved by the FAA is, it's actually the north end of the abandoned runway that was abandoned a couple of years ago. I think it's 23, 623, I think it's a runway identifier at that time. It's kind of a, there's a, see, there's a big circle out there as far as crop setbacks, and there's a few other details to it, too, but what it comes down to is there's the cement pads and an intellectual service out there to power up this new system and to be able to have anchoring for the new tower, and then the old would be removed after the new ones put up later. So the DOT is actually paying for the equipment portion of it. The project that we have is the prep work for it, getting the, the power out there and then getting the footings and stuff poured prior to them showing up to do the install. So the, the cost of the equipment portion is $150,000 that the state's providing at their costs, so.
What, what do you estimate our cost will be, then?
I think it's...
Why don't we have Krista come talk about the numbers? I think, I think she's got a handle on that, because the, the, the short answer is, council members, that this project was, was way out of whack in terms of the cost, and so it actually ended up being more than we originally anticipated, because the, the initial quotes came back a little off, and so Krista can talk about how we're going to handle that so that we can afford it.
Yeah, so with the budget amendment, again, the, the original budget that we set in 2021 was some estimates, so like Eric said, a little bit off. We did a budget amendment after second quarter to remove the site work at the hangars. In looking at the numbers, we took out too much revenue for that, so we reduced our revenue too much for that piece of it, so this new budget amendment is correcting that, but then we also received some more firm numbers from Bolig for the AWAS, the runway and the driveway projects, which is kind of that first section under background on the memo. So it breaks out the construction and engineering costs for each of the three projects, and then it also breaks out the city, state, and federal portion. We were fortunate with this change recently, that the runway project is going to be 100% federally funded, so the city does not have to contribute 5% anymore, so we will see some savings there that we can flow into the AWAS system. So the budget implications in the middle section of the memo, basically, I just outlined kind of what our original budget was, what our current budget is after we made the amendment in first quarter, and then what this new budget should be. So it accounts for these, the changes in the project costs and the split between city, state, and federal, and then also the revenue that we took out of the budget in error. At the end of the day, we are reducing the budget about $18,000.
So the short answer is, is that we're spending less.
We are spending less.
Even though the AWAS is costing more, because we were able to get some cost savings in some other places and have some revenue that we didn't originally account for. That's what it amounts to.
We don't know what the cost is to get our piece out there?
We, we have a pretty good idea at this point. There was two quotes that we, that we got, that Bolig got, I should say, and there's several pieces to that. There's Excel, which has to bring the electrical out, and that's 20-some thousand dollars, and then there's the equipment which the state is providing, and then there's, and how does the rest of that break out?
So the city portion for the AWAS project is about $36,500.
A good portion of that is engineering, actually, that we have to pay to Bolig.
Thirty-six, 500, you said?
Yep. And then the state is covering the remainder of that, which is 109,500.
What was that number, 109?
500.
Essentially, we don't have any choice.
Well, you always have a choice, you know, but, but ultimately, it's a pretty good deal, because the state's paying for 75% of it, and we're paying for 25% of it.
But the state is requiring this system.
Oh, well, yes, that, that's accurate. It's on our capital improvement plan, the state really wants us to do it, because we're, we're not really, our, our system is old, and so, yeah, we do have to kind of do it in reality, but because it's costing us more, about twice as much as we originally projected, and that's, the numbers that we were using were the numbers we got from the engineer. So we were, we, we put in the numbers in the budget originally that we anticipated, and then it came back much more, like $250,000 for the whole project instead of 150, and eventually, they kind of figured some things out and reduced it to where we were comfortable with what the project's going to cost now, the 130-some thousand dollars. And, yeah, we, we kind of have to do it.
Is that a done this fall?
Yep.
Okay.
They wanted to start already, and I told them I had to bring it to the City Council to approve.
That is why we are doing the budget amendment now instead of with our normal quarterly.
I, I just didn't know if it was one of those, we had to upfront the cash this year to, for next year.
Oh, no, 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 it's not one of those deals. That's going to happen. So all three of these projects that we have slated at the airport are slated to happen this fall.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-78, the budget amendment for the AWAS.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And any further discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Landay?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shuns?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next, the last item, Mayor, is, I'm going to have Jeff come up and explain what this is. We, this is one of these things that's also a little bit out of turn. We want to try to just do these amendments on a quarterly basis, but UCAP asked us to contribute some additional money, and I'll let Jeff explain what happened.
Just to give you a little bit of background on it, it was, and I've explained this before, but I'll just refresh your memory. When we got the last small cities grant for 596,000, we had to contribute, we had to put a certain amount of money into that. In fact, that was one of the things that got us the money in front of other, in front of other, of some of the other towns around, is because we were able to come up with some money ahead of time. So we, we dedicated $58,000 to loans that when a, when a house is getting fixed and we're only giving $25,000 grants for that particular project, but the grant might come, or the loan, or the project might cost 32,000, so there's $7,000 difference. In a lot of cases, the people that got the grant can't afford that $7,000, so then we would, we would loan the money to them. So we actually, essentially, we had put $58,000 of our own money, kind of our own money, skin in the game type of thing. So this all started back in 2020. We didn't know when that money was going to be, that $58,000 was going to be used. We didn't know how fast the project was going to go with getting, with getting, with products out of lumber yards or wherever else, getting some of the materials used. So we budgeted for $34,000, and it turns out, we're probably going to use all of that $58,000 this year. Plus, we, out of the 20 grants that we gave out, or UCAP gave out, or D gave out, we have three more additional ones that are going to need some help to get their, theirs done. Now, this is, this is money that would be loaned out to three more individuals, but would be paid back to us under low-interest, small payment loans. So that's what UCAP is looking for, is they're, they're, they're moving along fast with a lot of projects, but they would like another 15,000. And I think Eric said it best, the money that we have in this, this fund is, that's what it's for, is, is for housing.
So how does that work if, if they don't pay it back?
That there's, there's that opportunity, yep.
Because with the UCAP, if they don't live there a certain amount of years, or...
Well, I, I can explain that to you, Jerry. If, if you don't live there, let's say, we have an individual that gets the $20,000, and they only live in there 10 years, or five years, I'm sorry, so only 50% of that grant is forgiven, because it's forgiven every year you're in the house. So then, if they sell that house at five, the fifth year of the, of the grant, then during the closing, we have a lien on the property. So when they sell the property for 40,000 more than they, than they owe on it, we're the first ones to get our money. We get that money back.
They're typically secured by a mortgage.
Yeah, there's, yeah, by a mortgage.
Secured by the mortgage.
So we, we, yes, there's a risk that they don't pay it back, but ultimately, we get it back when the house gets sold.
And honestly, it hasn't been a risk at all for all of the ones that we've been dealing with over the past five years. We've got only one that we haven't, that we're behind on, and we're still getting money from those people also. And UCAP has told us many times that whatever we're doing is the right thing, because it's, they, they've never seen a place get so many of those loans back from people. I hate to say that, but it's...
Well, in essence, Jeff, this money in the community development block grant fund is money that's been generated by past loans.
Yes.
It's not taxpayer dollars.
Is not taxpayer, no, it is not, no. It's, it's some of those...
It is taxpayer dollars.
Well, yes, they're money.
It's federal, it's federal money.
Right.
It's not City of Tracy...
That's what I...
Property tax dollars, but it is absolutely from the, it is, originally was federal.
From the federal government. It just doesn't come from right here, yes.
Yeah.
But yes, Jerry, we've gotten this year in the, well, in the, I just, there was a $1,900 that you're able to put into that, that fund off of a house that just sold here a couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, I'm sorry.
Just a question, a clarification, Jeff. My understanding is, is that we committed 58,000, and that UCAP asked for an additional 15 because of three people, so ultimately, we're committing now 73 instead of 58.
73,000 instead of 58, yes.
Right, so I wanted you to understand that that 15 is not part of the 58, it's on top of the 58.
And that money comes back over 10 years?
Just depends on what the, I try to, you, or work with UCAP to try to keep the, the payments. I don't like to see a payment, if a $4,000 loan is out there, and if you stretch that out too far, then the payment's too low, so I try to keep that payment right around $100. So it could be five years, it could be seven years, they don't put it out there far. But like Matt said, everything is secured through, if that house ever sells, whether they're delinquent or whether we have all that information.
We have a considerable amount of money in the CDBG fund, by the way, I mean, it, like 150,000, so this isn't a hardship either, just, just so you understand that.
Well, you said it yourself, Eric, that's what this money is for.
It is what this money is for. I mean, ultimately, it's, it's one of the things, actually, eventually, we'd like to, when we get to that point, talk about, you know, what do we do with that resources? Because it was essentially originally federal money, and then it kind of turned into a revolving loan fund with regard to housing. And so we have money that we loan out, and that money keeps coming back, and, and so the fund basically just continues to grow. But when you have like 150,000 there that's intended to help the community for things related to housing, it's kind of a waste to have it just sit there. And so we should think about how we're going to program that money, and Jeff and I have talked about that. We don't have a full idea about what we want to do with that, other than this, this small piece of it, but it makes sense that you'd want to invest that money back into the community. So we'll, we'll bring something back to you eventually, but, but I, just to let you know that that's, that's what this is, and it's kind of sitting out there, it's a resource we haven't utilized like we should.
There's always money going out, but there's always money coming in, so it's...
That's right.
And it's making a big difference in town, too.
Yep.
And I, I think that's the biggest thing. It's like, if you drive around town, then, you know, you can look at some of the houses this summer, the new roofs, new site.
One over here on Third.
When these are all done, probably is going to be next spring when they're all done. I failed on getting pictures before pictures, maybe, maybe some of the owners will, because I, you know, have to go to the house and that type of thing, but there's a couple of them in town here. It's, my gosh.
Night and day.
Night and day. We've even got a couple, and I know this is getting off, but it, it's a couple examples. There's one on 10th Street that since that person got all theirs done and takes care of their yard so well, and takes care of their house now, and they've done everything, the neighbor who was one of the, the neighbor was, was struggling with getting some things picked up, now, now that yard's clean. It's just kind of snowballs.
So I'll make a motion to approve 2021-79 to approve the amendment to the CDBG.
Do we have a second?
Yep, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Diane.
Teague?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Shuns?
Aye.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, City Attorney, Matt, do you have something?
I have nothing for the public portion of the meeting.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting to discuss a legal matter regarding the Anderson, former Anderson Building at 157 Third Street.
I'll make a motion to approve 2021-79 to approve the amendment to the CDBG.
I'll make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Diane.
I vote.
Okay, it is closed, the meeting is, public portion is closed, thank you.